Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start our meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please take your call.
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wetzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to have Pledge of Allegiance. I will have Mr. Unfeliz Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We move to approve Order of Business for June 23, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting. This is the amended agenda.
Support.
Council Chair.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, if it's legal or not, but I'd like to see if we can move 9A to a study session to give us more time.
Mr. Clerk, what is the correct procedure on that?
It's an agenda item unless you remove it from the agenda. You have to address it.
We have to address it when we get to it, Councilwoman Muscat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on agenda items? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of June 9, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the minutes from June 9, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting is outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public comment on agenda items. This is items that are on the agenda only. You have two minutes and council cannot reply to you. We have Donna and Ashley with the names is under Gwen and Zach.
Yeah, my name's... Am I muted?
He can hear you.
Okay, I'm David Niesel. I'm the owner of Eager Bee, Long Care and Landscaping, commenting about items 7A and B. In efforts to maximize my time, I prepared a statement. I'm attending this council meeting today, discuss items 7A and B, hopefully shedding light on the suspicious nature to which it appears the head of the ordinance department is dead set on steering this contract to one company repeatedly. I was awarded and executed this contract for many years in the past, developing many of the policies currently being utilized by the ordinance department for the tall grass and weed enforcement policies. I am currently the lowest response bidder. Why is it that the incumbent contractor is continually awarded this contract when there have been other contractors who were less expensive and able to perform? Also, the bidding process was highly questionable this time around. After attending the pre-bid meeting, we were told the bid would be publicly open and bid tabs posted online. This did not happen. After nearly two weeks of calling the comptroller's office and leaving messages about the bid tabs, I finally received a call from the comptroller. It indicated that the delay was a result of a miscalculation by one of the contractors. Was this contractor actually allowed to adjust his bid? What adjustments were made in this two-week gap between when the bid was tallied and released to the public? Bids are usually posted in 24 to 48 hours to prevent fraud. I encourage council to do the due diligence and crunch the numbers when making your decision. To me, it seems the bidding process was far from fair and balanced. It is your fiduciary responsibility as representatives of our community to make the decisions which is going to give the residents of our city the best service for the best price. Thank you for your time.
You got it. Right on, two minutes. You must have timed that. Okay, is there any other comments on agenda items?
Mayor.
The mayor.
Can you please unmute the mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to comment on item 11F. We just got done with a lawsuit and the first item in the firm's comment is a meeting regarding to discuss this matter. I think I want to let all of you know, the Court of Appeals said the council has to have open meetings on this situation or we're going to be back in court. And the other thing is I would strongly suggest you ask our city attorney whether or not the original contract can be assigned or whether or not a new agreement has to be passed. I'm not trying to interfere, but I'm telling you that what I think is appropriate and we need to... All your meetings better be with all seven council members and open to the public or we're going to be in court. It's not a threat. This has got to be a public process and I can't believe the amount of fees that are included in this contract.
Okay, Mr. I have Sam. Can you please unmute him? He will have two minutes also.
There we go.
Good evening. I'm coming for item 9A as far as the clerk's position. We have a few concerns about the candidate that is running right now. As a matter of fact, I was watching that school board meeting last night and it seems like there's some sort of issue while they're all voting with Mrs. Tanya. I'm not quite sure whether it was maybe or for accident, but either way, it's completely wrong. And if it's an act too, so I do ask the council to revise that because somebody voted somebody to take their position, he has to be super capable, why is he doing? And we're trying to build Dearborn Heights, not destroy Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else?
I'm here.
Are you commenting? You can't hear through.
No, I'm not going to comment. No, 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 no. Just to begin, the first sentence he said that he got cut off, it was bad reception. So I'd like him to...
Hold on, I'm going to unmute Sam again. Hold on. Go ahead, Sam. Can you please say your first sentence again?
Maybe say it slower.
Which sentence you want to hear again?
The first one or two sentences, it was a bad reception. You're cutting in and out.
Last night, we were watching the Crestwood School Board meeting and it seems like there was some issue with Glenn, which was taking their all calls and their votes. So if those votes were done intentionally, that's illegal. And if they were done by accident, that's bad. So, and to admit it to it. And for somebody to take a position in the clerk's office and committing these kind of mistakes, we as a resident might not like it.
Oh, boy.
Thank you. All right, any other... Okay, we've got Zuhair Abdalhuk. I'm going to unmute him. Zuhair, you have to get your end now.
Okay, and I'm still speaking as a resident.
Okay.
I don't have the agenda, but I believe the CSO bond is on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Is it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I think the public deserve to have a public hearing about this bond. It's going to be around $29 million. And before you vote on it, you need really to see all the document, which is mandated by the state or the federal, to see how much time we have. And I believe since we have the audit coming, it is only fair to have this right after, you know, we see what's going on in the books. And I thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Amy Day-Dunne. Can somebody please find her and unmute her?
I... Yep, there we go. You just have to unmute it on your end. There we go.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm here for a concern about... I heard that there is a new ordinance recently from the city council that voted on...
Okay, this must be on the agenda, today's agenda. Is there ordinance?
Okay, I'll wait for later.
Okay, yeah, I would be at the end and I apologize for not being...
That's okay. That's okay.
Next, we have Director McIntyre on mute and... Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Is Corporation Counsel present tonight?
Yes, is this an agenda item that you're going to be...
It is. But I would want to first ask Corporation Counsel if I can speak at this point regarding the agenda item that I've put forth in terms of the history of the work relationship with a contractor that spoke out.
Can somebody unmute Corporation Counsel? All we need is a yes or a no. This is supposed to be a comment on agenda items.
Yes.
Yes, you can. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that I made the selection that I did and asking for council's approval based on the current history that we've had with the contractor that we've had currently. We've had no... Not one single complaint in four years. I've never had to ask them to cut it. They've always cut it on the date that was scheduled to be cut. I've never had to have conversations with them otherwise. And I've never had this current council... I'm sorry, this current contractor send aggressive messages to me and whether they apologized or not, I've never had that kind of relationship. I base my recommendation on the current performance and the fact that this current contractor has not given us one single complaint in four years. So, and has not asked for an increase as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment on items that are on today's agenda?
I think we're good.
Can you please help me look?
Yep, I think I got them through all of them.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Can we check and make sure? I think Mr. Rosenblatt is in and he was going to comment, but make sure he's in and if he's able to share his comments on the resolution, if he's in.
I'm looking for that name and I'm not seeing it.
Maybe it's 703 area code on the phone number?
I found it. I'm unmuting now. Go ahead, Mr. Rosenblum.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Angela Voo. I'm calling from Washington, DC. I am the Communications Director for the Coalition for National Infrastructure Bank and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the resolution supporting a bill in the US Congress. It's HR 6422. It was introduced at the end of March, calling for a $4 trillion national infrastructure bank modeled on the first bank of the United States and last used by Franklin Roosevelt to get us out of the Great Depression. The thing that is unique about this bank is that it takes existing treasury debt, monetizes it, so there's no new debt. It's a very big bank. It can rebuild the country, both rural and urban, building water, affordable housing, schools, roads, bridges, rail, and much more. It would create 25 million jobs which the country urgently needs right now. It would support labor unions, Davis Bacon, project labor agreements, and Buy American. We are... There is a resolution currently in the Michigan Senate. It just passed the Inkster City Council. This would provide a lot of jobs for young people. We're supporting the apprentice programs and has been endorsed and introduced in 18 state legislatures, supported by the National Association of Counties, the Congress of Black Women, the National Association of Latino Farmers and Ranchers, and many more. And I absolutely urge you to endorse this resolution. The bill was filed by Congressman Danny Davis from Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments on agenda items tonight? Please help me find if there's any other...
Mr. Jackson had his hand up.
Then I'm going to unmute you. Hold on. I'm going to unmute from your end, please, now. Mr. Jackson, oh, there you go.
Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson, you've muted. There... Hold on, man.
Even when he wasn't muted, we couldn't hear him.
Is your video... Is your audio on?
Maybe check in the bottom left corner of your screen, sir. Is there something there that you can... No?
Maybe he doesn't have a microphone.
Yeah.
No, I think he's spoken before.
It shows that he's muted right now.
And it wouldn't mute him if he didn't have a microphone.
Okay. There we go.
Mr. Jackson, you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Can you get it to work?
I... There's nothing I can do on my end. I'm really sorry.
It shows he's unmuted, but we can't hear him.
I'm sorry, is there a way he can call in, maybe? Can we get him the phone number to call in?
Mr. Jackson, did you want to call my number and I'll put it on speakerphone?
He might be writing it. It said, "What is..."
What is?
Oh, 11.
Move it over.
Move it to your... Move it to your right.
What is 11?
11F.
Okay, we can't answer a question. You can only comment on it. When we get to 11F, we... All right. Is there any further comments on agenda items at this time? I have Ruth Hapner. I will be unmuting her. Go ahead, Ruth. Let me unmute her. Please let me unmute her. Let me keep smuting her. Ruth, you've got to unmute yourself now.
Okay, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I want to make a comment on the ordinance 11D. And my comment is just when this is discussed, I want to be assured that Dearborn Heights has a strong, I guess, policy against pulling over people of color for no reason, no given reason. I want to just make sure there's some accountability that a black person cannot just be pulled over because of the color of their skin.
Thank you. Any further comments on agenda items? James Spalding, can you please find him?
Yep, there you go.
Hello? Yes, as a resident, I actually wanted to comment on, I think it's 11D as well, our call it action against police brutality. One of the things that I was interested in seeing and wanted to make sure was part of this was appropriate measures that would be able to make for citizens to be able to have accountability over the actions that police officers hold. That way, we know that, you know, there's some method of us to know what's occurring because one of the common occurrences in these issues is that it's somewhat self-regulated. So, police investigate their fellow police officers in a lot of departments. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the solution because without... It's pretty easy for that to fall under the rug, even no matter what other adjustments we make because accountability is the number...
I think he's having internet problems.
Yeah, I think we lost him.
Yeah, I think...
One issue.
He's breaking up.
Your internet is slowing down, sir.
Oh, I think he's in real time now. I think you're good. It was just that last few words that was missed.
Okay, I mean, I think I covered it for the most part. I'm curious to see what we... But that's kind of one of the main things I wanted to raise as a concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments at this time? Hold on, let me go to the chat.
Oh, um... Sorry, I got a gentleman here. I'm trying to see your name properly. Is that Tom H? Okay. Can I unmute him?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, you just have to unmute it on your end now, sir.
Okay, um, yes, I'd also like to comment on 11D more specifically. I greatly appreciate Dearborn Heights Police Department desiring to, you know, address the issue of police brutality. Had a situation made about two or three weeks ago where, because I can church in Dearborn Heights, our African-American senior pastor, who's been senior pastor there three years and a pastor total there, seven years, was actually pulled over by Dearborn Heights police officer for no reason. Simply asked him, "What are you doing here?" He explained to him, "I work at that church over there and the senior pastor." And ultimately, I believe the police officer told him, you know, "Thank you for serving our community. You can go." Okay, that is a clear example of racial profiling. I understand this idea that cops look for things that are different in the neighborhoods. However, that African-American pastor has been there seven years total. That's not different than the neighborhood. This is the guy who gets involved in the schools. This is the guy... Because our church has actually done stuff for the Dearborn Heights Police Department. And it's my hope and my prayer that the police department will also begin to recognize not just trying to change ice brutal methods of dealing with people, with criminals, but also begin to seriously address issues of racial profiling, issues of inborn prejudices that we tend to, you know, carry with ourselves. That's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Any further questions or any further comments on agenda items tonight? Okay, at this point, I'm going to go back. Unfortunately, I apologize, I skipped the oath of office to be administered to treasurer appointing Zuhair Abdalhuk. So let's unmute the clerk and Mr. Abdalhuk to be sworn in.
Good evening, Mr. Abdalhuk. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Zuhair Abdalhuk.
Zuhair Abdalhuk.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To hold up the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of the states.
And faithfully perform the duties of treasurer.
And faithfully perform the duty of the treasurer.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Say that again, please.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
The county of Wayne and the state of Michigan.
The county of Wayne and the state of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you to you and the city council, and I hope with all my heart to work with the mayor first and everybody in the city for the benefit of our residents.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council approve items 61 through 630 as outlined.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have a question on item 627, system temp corporation. Can someone tell me what the contractual services for $10,012 is for? I see we had a repair of a blower motor for $4,797.24, but I don't know what that other service for $10,000 is.
Chief, I'm trying to unmute you. You'll have to unmute yourself. There you go.
You can hear me? Okay, I'm pulling that one up because there's quite a few bills actually in there if you take a look. Which bill are you talking about?
Well, it's the whole... Well, it's everything for $10,000. I don't know what it's for and it's very hard. Well, let me try to get to it myself here on my iPad. You know, I didn't have time to call you today, Mr. Myers, Chief Myers, and I apologize. I'm going to take back the question. I'm going to call you tomorrow and we can find that out tomorrow because I'm pretty sure you have an explanation for it.
That's fine, yes. I'd be happy to answer it and I look forward to your call.
Okay, thank you very kindly, sir. And I do apologize for not calling you earlier.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on fund transfers and current claims?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
For Jack McIntyre, Director Jack McIntyre, can you clarify for us on the grass cutting ones? And they're both with artistic lawn. Both of them have an amount before budget of... The first one for the grass and weed cutting charges, negative $41,507. And then the second one, other various invoices for negative $89,0084. Is that... Is the negative because it can't be predicted? What is the exact purpose of the negative number versus an actual amount that's budgeted?
Director McIntyre, you need to unmute from your end. Director McIntyre...
Yep, I've done it three times and then it keeps remuting me right away. So, I think that's probably going to be a better question for Linda Vance, the comptroller, and she can explain how the... How that... Why that number looks like it's a negative.
I'm Carla Vance, you're unmuted. Hi, the one that's for the sidewalk weeds, these claims were put in for the budget amendments that I put in. So, the sidewalk and weed one, if you recall, when I did the amendments at the last meeting, I allocated more money for the ordinance one because it brought in more revenue to match. And the one that's for the other city grass cutting, there wasn't money in the budget currently for that. We didn't have that line before this year, so we put an amendment in there. But the reason why they're showing negative is because there was... The one had no budget. The other one went over budget, but it had excess revenue to match it.
So, speaking of that one, do you know why we didn't have that in the budget at all?
We decided to pull it out because of the concern of... For the city budget one, we never had a special line for that, for the city cutting. It was just going under contracted services. So, Director Salmy and I both agreed that we should have it separated so that we could track the expenses for the city cutting, so it's a little bit clearer. So, we created the line outing, but we did it after we created the budget in the previous year. So that's why it didn't... So, that's why it didn't have a budget and whatnot. But now it does from here and we, this way we can see what the actual cost is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any other questions on fund transfers and current claims? Okay, at this time, let's make sure all the council people are unmuted to take a vote. Councilor Wenzel, you're not mute, you need to unmute from your end. We're waiting for Councilman Wenzel to unmute himself.
There we go.
This is for fund transfers and current claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bid. This is ordinance and animal control director McIntyre bid award for non-city-owned grass weed cutting and debris removal.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move we concur with our ordinance director, Jack McIntyre, and approve the bid to artistic landscaping and lawn service as outlined in item 7A.
I will support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel has moved his end of first, and I have Councilman Abdullah and Councilman Bazey. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that artistic landscape and lawn care, they're based here in Dearborn Heights, South End. They're owned by South End residents, Dearborn Heights residents. They do a lot of community work, a lot of volunteer work, especially for the watershed steward commission. Anytime they're asked to do a favor, they never say no. And they're, they're here right, their equipment is right here in the city. In the event that they need something done right away, they're able to get the job done right away. And I applaud the director's choice on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Councilman Abdullah.
Ma'am Chair, thank you. I was prepared to vote on this, but honestly, I'm a little concerned right now. And I did check into, you know, the, honestly, two of the three bidders. I tend to be a little biased towards a local bidder. Whenever we have somebody that's local, I always prefer to go with somebody that's from within the city. And I did check into the reputation, I know we've worked with Artistic, of both bidders are local. And both of them, I got pretty good reviews from different people. I called to check in on them, so that was good. And I did see that Eager Beaver, who I know we haven't worked with most recently, but I did notice that his numbers were lower. And now with some of the things that he's brought out, honestly, I'm a little concerned. And I'd like to personally propose that we take this to a study session because to be quite blunt, these are some very serious allegations. And I'd like to hope and think that that's not the case. But I think we should take this to a study session to find out a little bit more information before we make a decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so I have a few questions. The first question, I don't know where, it says that it was the lowest bidder. I'm looking here for the city-owned property. They're actually about 15, Eager Beaver is about $15,000 less than Artistic, that's for one. So then I'm looking at the other one with the different proposals that you have. Go here. Another screen. You have all the proposals, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Each proposal, actually, Eager Beaver is cheaper than Artistic, that's one. The second item, well, obviously, so Eager Beaver is cheaper than Artistic, much cheaper. And so, I'm also concerned about what was brought up earlier. And we're going with a company that is much more money and is costing us a lot more than the second bidder, Eager Beaver. And the other thing, we didn't see anything from DPW, what would it take for them to do the work, you know, proposal? And so, they weren't on the bid sheet, you know, what it would cost for us to do the work for the big lots. And the third item I had here is, I looked up on the Michigan website for the worksman's comp. So, I see Expert Lawn has an insurance company for the worksman's comp. It's called Farm Bureau, General Insurance Company. And Eager Beaver has a Hastings Mutual Insurance Company. And when I looked up Artistic, they don't have insurance. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, obviously, the attorney signed off on this, and I'm kind of shocked why the attorney would put the city in a liability issue with a company that doesn't have workman's comp insurance. Because if I hire a contractor to do work in my house, I would definitely want, make sure that company has insurance. Yet you have a company is doing work for the city of Dearborn Heights, doesn't have that. That's a big concern for me, for liability concern.
Um, Mr. McIntyre, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Thank you. I do not review the contracts with the idea of looking at all of the specifications having been met. That is something that is done administratively. So, in terms of appropriate insurances, that would be something that would be done either by the controller's office, the, or Mr. Salmy or Mr. McIntyre in this situation. And they would be able to address that issue, I would think.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. I too have some concerns. I was ready to vote on this, but now I'm not because of what was said earlier and I couldn't comment on it. And it's, I'm very concerned. What happened in the bid process? This is why we have a bid process, so we're honest, open, and fair. So, I would like to see Councilman Abdullah's request for a study session to happen as early as next week.
Well, first of all, we have a motion on the table. We cannot do a study session unless we vote on this motion.
And that isn't a problem, and I'm ready to vote on the motion.
Okay. Well, next, we have Councilman Constance.
Well, briefly, and I was the maker of the motion, and I think a study session may be a good idea just to revisit the issue of grass cutting, of our employees doing the grass cutting first. But maybe Director McIntyre can comment just in a sentence or two about the adjustments made to the bidding for the, for our benefit, the adjustments made to the bids from Eager Beaver and to Artistic.
Okay, you're unmuted, Director McIntyre.
Yeah, I actually just, when he first mentioned that, the other contractor, it didn't surprise me that, you know, he would try to say something. I texted Linda Vance as soon as he said that. She's not aware of anything. The only thing that may have been a delay was receiving the actual bid bonds, but that was for John Salmy's request. Right now, we're talking about the residential cuts that are cut through ordinance. So, no explanation. But to speak to the insurance, Artistic, I saw the insurance certificate, it's with State Farm. I think Dearborn Heights has a $4 million coverage. So, I'm not sure where that information came that they don't have insurance. They've always had insurance and that's always been a requirement. And they, like every other company that we've ever had, is, we wouldn't let them do anything without insurance. But they're with State Farm, they have a $4 million coverage. And the city of Dearborn Heights ends up being the policyholder on that, that they put in place. So, I'm not sure where that's coming from. As far as my, the prices go, Artistic is a little higher than what Eager Beaver did, and all I can speak to that is, my experience with Artistic is not the same that it was with the other company. I was not, there's a reason why we didn't continue with that company, and that's not being said. I'm not sure what standards he put in place for us, but we've developed our own standards. We haven't, we don't tell the, the grass company, the grass contractor to tell us the standards. We tell them the standards. And I will tell you that I was very frustrated in the past with grass not being cut on the day that it was scheduled to be cut, overbilling, issues that, with previous companies in the past. And I've never had that experience with Artistic, not once. We, it's a local company, never had a single complaint about them. And, and I don't, I'm not even sure, to me, this is an easy thing here.
Okay, thank you. Controller Vance, next, she has her hand up. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I am not aware of any recalculation or anything like that. Matthew Paul in my office is the one who handles all of that, and he brings those items to my attention if there's an issue. So, not knowing firsthand, because he's the one who processes it, but he never told me that there was any issues or any delays. I reached out to him in a text, but he's not accustomed to me texting him for questions. I don't believe there is any problem with the bidding process or it would have been brought to my attention.
Okay.
And he's the one that also requests the insurance bonds, like Jack said. So, he makes sure that everyone has what they need, and if they don't, he marks it on his sheet or informs the person involved, so.
Thank you very much. Is there any further questions that concerns in regards to this agenda item? Okay, we are voting to pass it. If it fails, then we will vote to put it into a study session if you want. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Is this for a study session?
No.
Okay.
This is the motion that is on the table.
Thank you.
This is the ordinance and animal control director bid award for non-city-owned grass cutting and debris removal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who is the aye? Okay, Councilwoman Wenzel, all those opposed?
No.
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 Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you entertain a motion to move this item to study session?
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Wenzel was opposed. It is being moved to a study session. I will schedule it at time permits before the next general meeting in two weeks.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We still must approve someone to continue to cut the grass in the meantime, though.
You guys should have figured that one out.
Because I move to extend whoever's cutting the grass now to keep cutting it until we resolve this issue.
At least for the next 30 days.
It's going to take, it's going to take every bit of that. So, I move that whoever, the contractors that's cutting the grass now, continue to cut till we get this resolved for 30 days.
Support the motion.
Support by Councilwoman Heston. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. The ayes have it. Did the clerk's office get all that?
Was Councilman Bazey the only no?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, then I got it.
Okay, because I know we did a lot in the road there.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Salmy bid award for city-owned lots and grass cutting.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Salmy, who has reviewed all of the grass cutting bids received, and is the recommendation of the department that the city council award the contract to artistic landscaping and lawn service an amount of $4,000 per cut for all city-owned properties listed in the bid documents. And this is effective July 1st, 20 through June 30th, 2022. And also authorizing to return the bid bonds as outlined in item 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I have the same concern. And again, you know, they spoke about the insurance, you know, that's, maybe they had like liability, but not the worksman's comp, which is, you know, again, that's a big liability to our city. And again, you know, they're not the lowest bidder. And, you know, it's kind of harsh, you know, like the director mentioned, you know, saying that they were harsh with the statement that they made, but that's very harsh to put something on documents saying that they were the only ones not having complaints. So, that's kind of bashing the previous company, Eager Beaver. So, again, I'm not voting for this as well because there's still concerns, as I mentioned in the earlier, seven, I'm sorry, the previous.
Hey, Councilman Abdullah, you're next.
No, I just brought to suggest, or I mean, unless anybody else had questions, but I suggested we do the same thing and include this one in the study session for residential lots. And I could amend my motion.
You gotta vote on this motion that's on the table.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that motion fails. Now, does somebody want to make a new one?
I make a motion, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I make the motion that we turn this 7B to a study session, but also continue to cut grass with the current contractor for at least 30 days.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Heston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Motion to move to a study session passes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Clerk?
Where'd he go? He's muted now.
He muted himself.
On the first motion, we had yays and nos, and I'm not sure who the yays and nos were on the original motion that got voted down, please.
Okay, can you please repeat your vote on the first one?
This would be for eight, 7B, I'm sorry, right?
This is for.
7B.
7B to, for the city-owned grass cutting. Now, before we move to a study session, there was a motion made and it was supported. The vote rejected. Who is the nay on it? Or who is the?
Tom Wenzel was the only nay.
I mean, Congress.
Or yes.
No, it was only yes.
Only yes.
Only yes.
On 7B, six council people voted nay, and Tom Wenzel voted yea.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the reports from there, we have Act 345 Police Employer Pension System trustee appointment.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko to appoint Mr. John Riley as a trustee of the Act 345 Police and Employer Pension System. This appointment is to fill the vacancy left by Mr. Dennis Klotz. And this is as outlined in item 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constance, is there any discussion?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
This question is for our former treasurer, John Riley. I don't know if he's somewhere in here.
Current.
Well, no, the new treasurer's been sworn in. Either way, John Riley. Just want to make sure, because I know obviously he's going to be unfortunately leaving us by the end of the month. Is this something that he's going to be able to continue to do based on the fact that you're not going to be here as a treasurer? Is that going to cause any type of problem for you, especially with your new job?
First of all, Mr. Councilman, I do not have a new job. I'm retiring. And second of all, is this is just like a, it's like a city council position. It's a trustee position. The meetings are normally held once a month unless there's a special meeting, and I will be able to attend those meetings, you know, monthly.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hold on a minute, I gotta chat, I gotta ask here. I'm gonna unmute Director Salmy, I think he has something to say. And it may be on the previous. Can somebody unmute Director Salmy?
Sorry, I'm looking for him. Here we go.
Director Salmy?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I found you.
Okay, thank you. So, it is on the prior item. I just want to address something really quickly about Eager Beaver being the lowest bid for the DPW cuts. His cuts are, per cut is $4,128 for a total of $49,512 for 12 cuts. And Artistic's is $48,000 for 12 cuts. So, I just want to point a clarification there. I'm sorry that I couldn't get through, so that's all, thank you.
No problem. So, yeah, there's a lot of people in here. No problem. So, yeah, there's a lot of people in here today. Okay. Any further discussion on eight A, Act three forty-five Police and Fire Pension System trustee appointment? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Tifa and Brown's Board reappointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I would, uh, move that city council reappoint, and I'm hoping I get this right. This is Cheryl Wolcichowski, uh, who resides at twenty-six nine, nine, twenty-six nine one eight Golf View in Dearborn Heights to the Tifa and Brownsfield Board, term to expire in December of two thousand and twenty-three as outlined in, um, uh, eight B.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair.
Council, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, I can't find Tom Wenzel. Tom, are you on here?
Oh, we gotta find him to that vote.
Is he iPhone Tom?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think he was, I think he did have iPhone Tom.
Okay, he, he was out for a second and he came right back in, but, um, I just asked to unmute him. I asked to, there we go. Are you there, Tom?
Yes.
There you are. Okay.
I'm looking for something about. Okay, so we've got all the votes in on that. Okay, next item, let me get this straight here. Next item under reports from city officials is nine A. Um, before I go any further, I wanna say some of our council members have been bullied in regards to this agenda item. I repeat, be bullied by certain individuals in how to vote on the agenda. I will always base my decisions on what is best interest for the city. That means I will base my decision on merit only. Friends will not influence me on how I vote on this or anything else in the future. With that being said, our next agenda item on the agenda is, done by me, Council Chairwoman Melanowski Maxwell. This is the clerk's appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Uh, you're going to, uh, read off names, and then we say yea or nay?
Yeah, I do need the, um, the motion and the support before I can do that.
Yeah, I move that we definitely make this appointment. Uh, the person will have basically a month to train. We've interviewed, all the candidates were very good, but I move that we proceed to make the appointment, uh, to, for the city clerk.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. All right, at this time, I'm gonna go one at a time and ask for who would like to, um, non-vote to vote on.
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, we didn't get a chance to comment on this.
Oh.
Like we normally do.
Um, last time we didn't comment. This, we're going forward with it because it's been, we've got a motion on.
But I, I understand that, but at the beginning, I was trying to get a point across before the approval of the agenda to see if I can move something to a study session.
Yeah, that's not appropriate at that time, as the clerk has told us.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, at this time, um, is there any discussion?
Well.
Madam Chair. Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
I just wanna get a clarification here. I know you're nominating, or each person's nominating somebody, so obviously logically it'd be one person, but if we're just voting on each one, then technically I can vote for two people. So I just wanna clarify, you want for just one person?
What I did last time is I called everybody individually, and I got Gary Miyaki, and then what she did is she told me who you would want to nominate, and then the end, we would take the ones that had the most to vote on you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Council Chair, I would, I would recommend that there be an actual motion
for a person, um, just from the standpoint that with the number of candidates, this might be difficult as opposed to like just having two, uh, if it could be narrowed down. That's just a recommendation.
Well, what I do at this point, I do, they don't have to approve this any further since we have the motions, of course. Is that correct?
Uh.
Yes.
Well, they have to go through a further process of being able to select someone.
Right, right, and I'm getting ready to do that.
Okay, all right.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So at what point, as Councilman Muscat mentioned, we moving this to a study session or motion it to go to a study session, at what point do we do that?
Um, Mr. Clerk, you're our parliamentarian. I'm trying to unmute you. I'm waiting for him to unmute. Go ahead.
Yes, what, what I stated at the onset was, um, I, I believe Councilman Muscat wanted to move it at a study session at the agenda approval, which was not proper. However, you have to either remove it from the agenda, or you have to bring it on the agenda. At this time, as in other motions, it is proper to move it to a study session if, uh, the council so desires.
Okay, well, at this time, let's vote on the motion we have before. That would mean that tonight we would choose who we would appoint as clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Wenzel. It's off here. Okay, I'll come back to it. Councilman Coniston?
Uh, yes, I move that we vote tonight.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
No.
If I say yes, and Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Yes, we will be voting on it tonight. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go down the list, and I'm gonna ask everybody to nominate a person like we did with the treasurer. Um, at this point, Councilman Wenzel, who do you nominate? Oops, we gotta unmute him. He muted himself on the stick. Councilman Wenzel, who do you nominate?
Lynn Siena.
Okay, Councilman Coniston, who do you nominate?
Uh, Lynn Siena.
Councilman Abdullah, who do you nominate?
I nominate Lynn Sienya.
Okay, Councilman Muscat, who do you nominate?
I nominate Lynn Sienya.
Councilman Bazey, who do you nominate?
Ms. Fowas.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, who do you nominate?
I nominate Lynn Fowas.
Mabilla.
And I nominate Lynn also. Um, the majority has nominated Lynn, so at this time, congratulations, Lynn. You have been appointed as a clerk. At this time, we will-
Thank you. Um, um, Council Chair, I just wanna make sure, I know we were nominated. Can we ask the clerk if we have to vote on that, or is that sufficient?
No, I don't think we-
I just want, I just wanna make sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk?
There he is.
I think, I think it would be proper, um, you had two nominations, um, one being Ms. Sienya, the other being Ms. Fowas. I think it would be proper to now have a vote, um.
Okay, thank you.
Because that was actually, the way the motion was made was to nominate, so, um.
So we would need to nominate Anna Second, correct?
The, the nominations have been done. Um, now it is time to, um, vote for either of the candidates.
Okay, at this time, we will, all those in favor of Lynn Sienya, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask for a call on it. Councilman Wenzel, were you a yes or no?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
No.
And I'm a yes. Okay. All those in favor of Ms. Fowas, say aye.
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 Okay, let's go through. Councilman Wenzel for Ms. Fowas, is that a yes or a no?
Oh, he's on mute again.
Council Chair, we already have five votes.
We have five votes, so at this time, it is official. Lynn, congratulations.
Thank you all very much for your confidence in me, and I will uphold my, my office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Treasurer Riley, Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority Board Appointment Request.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with City of Dearborn Heights, uh, Treasurer John Riley for the appointment as a delegate to the, for his appointment, as the delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority Board, which expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. He's requesting that we do this for the term commencing on July first, two thousand and twenty, and expert expiration on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with, uh, Mayor Pletko is currently the alternate delegate with a term expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, as outlined in item nine B.
Support.
Support.
Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, I think he wants us to make an appointment, number one, because he's retiring. Number two, this is a very, very, very important authority. They, um, uh, govern the, uh, picking up and the disposal of the waste at the landfill, the, the keeping of the monofil, which is the, uh, the dust that's left over from the incinerator. Um, I would be willing to, uh, serve on the authority. It's, it's, uh, quite an undertaking. I would ask Treasurer Riley if he, uh, is so inclined to speak on what the, uh, person on the authority from Dearborn Heights would have to do. Madam Chair.
Well, it is unmuted. Go ahead, please.
Yes, um, so I was not looking for reappointment to this position. I was just, um, noting that my term expires and then the council, it's a council appointment, uh, to that board. Uh, the board normally meets monthly. It works on the first Thursday of the month at nine o'clock, and it rotates to the various five cities. So basically, Dearborn Heights would host it here at City Hall, um, you know, on the first Thursday of the month at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, I'm, you know, like many others, uh, we are do, currently doing Zoom meetings to, um, to facilitate, um, the COVID-nineteen emergency.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Well, it looks like we have to do an appointment, and I'm just wondering if our, uh, uh, city clerk, uh, can tell us if we make the appointment today or not, cause I'm ready to make an appointment.
Mr. Clerk?
I'm so, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm, I'm sorry.
You can unmute the whole company.
Uh, can we make the appointment now? Can we nominate somebody for that appointment right now, or do we do that in, at another time?
You, i- it's a agenda item. You can, you can nominate somebody.
Thank you. Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we, uh, appoint, uh, Councilman Robert Coniston, uh, as the new delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority Board. He seems interested in it, and, uh, I think he'll do a fine job.
Support.
Thank you.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Councilman Bazey, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, are no? Um, it passes. Next item on the agenda is C E D D Director Hashem, PY two thousand and twenty C D B G Action Plan.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move the council approve the, uh, the action plan for year two thousand and twenty of the C D B G as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we include to authorize the mayor to sign the certificates as well?
Yes, I, uh, uh, and, uh, the motion should include, uh, for the, for the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Councilman Coniston, are you still supporting it?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Controller Vance Road Fund Budget Amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with our Controller Linda Vance asking us to approve the below budget amendments, and I'm just gonna go over which ones they are. Appropriations Fund Balance for one hundred thousand, uh, trans slash local for one hundred thousand, local streets, uh, major for one hundred thousand, and street repairs for one hundred thousand. The above amendments are a correction to the amendments previously submitted and approved by council on June ninth, two thousand and twenty, and she is requesting the amendment by one hundred thousand. This is a transfer from major roads to local roads as outlined in item nine D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers' request for approval for school resource officers.
Madam Chair, go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
No, no, go ahead.
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we concur with our police chief and approve the, uh, inter cooperate, inter local cooperation agreement and, uh, assign a, uh, police officer to our two school districts as outlined in item, uh, nine.
E.
E.
Okay, do I have?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I had a question for our police chief, uh, Mark Myers. Um, in regards to the cost, I just wanted to clarify that, and, uh, I'm trying to flip to the pages here while I'm trying to talk to you, but there was an amount in there. That's for all the officers. That was not per officer. Is that correct? Trying to find the exact page. Can you hear me, or?
Yeah, I need the police chief, please. I'll undo it. I'll get it. Go ahead, please.
You got him?
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so what you have there is actually, you have the agreements, which are fifty percent of a bait, of the average salary of one of our officers for each district, which take a hu, basically a hundred, round number of a hundred thousand, uh, fifty percent would be paid by us, fifty percent would be paid by that district. The addendum that should be also added to that, the addenda for each one, was because they only had six months of service from those officers, because when the schools closed, um, both the, uh, superintendents, I know I see Mr. Miyaki raising his hand as well, but, um, both the superintendents and us agreed that it wouldn't be the, uh, right to charge them for services that they didn't get.
Okay, but the, 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 the cost sharing part, the fifty thousand includes all the officers, correct, that we are providing?
Yes.
It's not per officer, it's for all the officers we're providing.
So we, we actually have one officer assigned to District Seven and one to Crestwood.
Right, so there's two.
Correct, there's-
And the fifty thousand-
Agreement for each one.
So then, I, I can only get a clarification, and is it fifty thousand per officer, or is it twenty-five, and in this case, approximately?
So, for Crestwood, it was fifty thousand, that's the agreement. District Seven, it was fifty thousand, uh, uh, on, you know, as the rounded up number. They-
Right.
So, there's one officer for each district. Each one has its own contract where they were going to be responsible for approximately fifty thousand, and the city would be responsible for the remainder. Um, and then the addenda just for the schools closing.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Council Chair.
Okay, go now. Next we've got, uh, Corporal Council Miyaki wanted to comment.
Yes, thank you. The motions should, uh, approve both SRO agreements and both addenda one for each, for each of the school districts, Crestwood School District, uh, and District Seven. A motion should be clear about that and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
I'll read, I'll read the formal agreement, then.
That's what I wanted to add. Go ahead.
All right, motion by Dave Abdallah, seconded by?
Bob Coniston.
Bob Coniston, to approve the following agreements and addendum. Uh, inter local corporate cooperation agreement for assignment of school resource officer between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Crestwood School District. Inter local cooperation agreement for assignment of school resource officer between the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights School District number seven. Inter local cooperation agreement for assignment of school resource officer between the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights School District Number 7. Addendum to inter local cooperation agreement for assignment of school resource officer agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Crestwood School District. E E R, it says C E R, so Sir Agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights School District Number 7. Further, Mayor Pletko and City Clerk Rochefaz are authorized to execute these agreements. An addendum on behalf of the city as outlined in Item, or very sad, 9E.
Very good.
Support.
Or, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers Request for Repro- Approval Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
I move that City Council approve the payment to the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police in the amount of $2,700. And payment will be made from the Police Department's contractual service account as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to clarify, that is not for membership. That is actually for the accreditation process. Accreditation is something that is discussed quite frequently now to show that our policies, procedures, and the way that we run our police department falls within the federal, state and best practices of law enforcement. So this is the actual procedure to become an accredited agency, which then allows us to get discounts on our insurance as well as federal grant money. And it shows that we're meeting all the standards that are being put forth to us by governing bodies as well as the federal and state law. So this is the accreditation process, not membership into the M H C P. Different.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Um, I want to, Melissa, next.
Oh, I Yeah, I was just, I wanted to comment on, before we voted on that last issue about the SROs. And I wanted to clarify it, that the chief clarify why there, there's only two school districts involved in this and not all three.
Okay.
Yeah, ma'am. Would you like me to comment on that now, ma'am?
Could you please do it? Just, just so we, does the residents know?
Sure. So all, all three school districts were offered the SRO program a year ago, or actually probably closer to 18 months. I met with the principal at Westwood Schools as well. At that time, they didn't find it was in their budget to support that type of endeavor. We are always open to that, but that, that's something that we would work on in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we have an item on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? We are in 9
Madam Chair.
9F. Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
I just want to clarify, just for correction for the councilman. The motion was made based on 9G, or he mentioned accidentally 9G. I just want to clarify it's 9F.
It's 9F, yeah.
As in Frank.
Yes, I'm sorry, 9F.
And who supported that, please?
I did.
No, I did. It was Lisa.
I'm sorry, Lisa did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good catch.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Request to Purchase of a TECO Speed Face Plus Thermal Temperature Scanning and Stand.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our former police chief, Michael Petrie. Asking for preparation for the reopen, in order to prepare for the reopening of the Justice Center in City Hall, requesting council approve for the payment of the following. Purchase of a TECO Speed Face Plus Thermal Temperature Scanner and Stand. And it'll, this is for the total cost on all three units is $8,694, which is $2,898 per unit. The funding of this unit does, does meet the requirements to be funded through O W I forfeiture and JAG Grants. Made for the Justice Assistance, Assistance Grant, which is for technology advancement and law enforcement. And this is as outlined in Item 9G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
That sounds like an awesome lot of money for taking temperatures. Now, I, I, I'm not gonna get too harsh here, but touchless thermometers can range from anywhere as low as $29 and be accurate. What is, what's the difference of these than a handheld gun that shoots the six inches from somebody's head and gives them their, their temperature?
So for the police department, there's been one deployed at the police department. I believe there's one at City Hall. And then there's one that's gonna believe, believe, believed to be deployed at the court when they reopen with their employees. These are actually tablets that not only scan temperature, but they also scan for if a, a person's wearing a face mask. And if we use them on just employees, they also recognize who that employee is. So we get timestamps of what their temperature was. If they were wearing a mask and it will alarm if they are over temperature or if they aren't wearing a mask. So it gives us control under the circumstances of COVID to actually track and monitor the health and well-being of our employees. So department, it's not something that you touch. It's actually stands on a base. You look at it, it scans your temperature, recognizes you and logs that. So as 100 employees coming in out of the police department on a regular basis, that would allow us to do that. So it's actually paying for itself tenfold. By keeping people safe and employed.
Thank you very kindly, Chief.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have TIPA Administrator Roscoe, 2021 TIPA's Proposed Budget.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with our TIPA Administrator Tom Roscoe and approve the TIPA budget as outlined in 9H. And that we reviewed before the meeting in the study session.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have TIPA Administrator Roscoe. Continuation of new used car lots more.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
I move that we concur with TIPA Administrator Tom Roscoe. Who had mentioned that at our December 10th, 2019 City Council Meeting. It was discussed that the next step for the ongoing Van Born Road Corridor Revitalization Project is in need of an overlay zoning district, which will put into effect uniform zoning for both sides on Van Born and Dearborn Heights and in Taylor. But because of the COVID situation, obviously it's been a little bit of a delay. So he has advocated as one of the members of the steering committee that our body consider instituting a moratorium on establishment of any new used car lots in order to allow consultants, committee and our body ample time to resolve the issue overlay zoning district. And instituting a moratorium on used car lots until June 30th, 2020, for which he thanks us. And this is as outlined in Item 9I.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Barry.
That item doesn't have a date as to how long the extension's for. Are we making it with a motion or will there be another motion at a later date?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
What, what he's, what he's asking for is he's asking for a reasonable amount of time. So I think for us, we'd have to personally propose a reasonable amount of time. Personally, I'm throwing it out there, 45 days. I don't know what you guys think about that, but I think it's a plenty of time to be able to do what they need to do.
I, I agree. 45 days is a good number.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So are we making a motion for 45 days or?
If anybody has objection, that's what I'm gonna do.
I support that. I was a second.
So I amend the motion for 9I. For the moratorium to be extended for an additional 45 days from the day of June 30th, 2020.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Rules and Regulations Concerning Industrial Pretreatment Program Adopted by the Great Lakes Water Authority Resolution.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with the recommendation of the Great Lakes Water Authority and adopt the, a resolution concurring in the rules and regulations concerning industrial pre-treatment program that have been adopted and are going to be used by the Great Lakes Water Authority as outlined in 9, 11A.
Do I hear a support?
Support.
Supporting it?
Support.
Oh, Councilman Muscat. I'm sorry, I've got this chat on my thing here. Somebody sent me. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Notice of Intent Resolution for Capital Improvement Bonds Drafted by Trick McCall and Miller Canfield.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'm, I'm, this caught me off guard. Being on the, the agenda like it is. We need input from the residents. This is a large amount of money. Okay. $29 million is a lot of money. And we plan on putting this on water bills and I think we need further discussions on this. The people need to be involved on this, on how they want to pay for it. This is taxpayer money. They're the ones that's gonna fork this money out. They need to have a say on how they want to do it. So I, I suggest and move that this goes to a, back to the administration to set up a, a meeting, a town hall meeting.
I support that.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Councilman Abdullah, did you?
I, well, I just wanted to check. Personally, I'm not in favor right now of voting on this and, and I also 100% agree that the residents should be able to have their say in this. And then also for us to look into it a little bit further, we did have one study session on us. But this was the first time this was, you know, presented to us as far as details is concerned. And for us to vote on it this fast with 29 million, I'm, I'm definitely not ready to do it. But nevertheless, though, I believe in our clerk can clarify for us. I believe we have to make the motion first, have it fail before we can move further.
On the agenda, I would spend motion and second. So at this time, are you ready to take a vote on that motion as it was?
I think Councilman Bassy had something to say.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bassy.
Yeah, I also, I mean, this should also either go to a public hearing or, or, you know, be on the ballot. And, and I do agree, you know, 29 million is a lot for us, for the council to approve without the residents in agreement. I mean, I suggest for obviously we got to vote on, but for it to go on the ballot for residents to vote on that much money.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, I mean, what we're voting on is the notice of intent for the bond issue. The improvements we have to make to our sewer is a massive expense, but it, it does have to be done and you know, the, the, this cost, the infrastructure costs are the biggest cost the city's faced, you know. We did hear from Treasurer Riley about the advantages of doing the bond issue now with the interest rates low. So, I mean, I, I don't know of any community that votes on whether or not to issue bonds to finance the project. So I, I, you know, it might be a good idea to have another study session with Treasurer Riley and possibly bond counsel, but it's, it's something that we can't kick down the road. That's all I'm saying.
We've kicked out, kicked it down the road for 10 years.
That's right.
We have Commissioner Russell. It's your turn, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, this is a lot of money. The water meter issue. You know, it's, it's hearsay. I want to see some studies on these water meters being replaced, why, why we have to. I, I know they're, they might be inaccurate, maybe. But there's no study, you can't see any studies if there is. I understand that Mr. Salami has been involved with water meter replacement with other municipalities. And I'd like to see something, a result of that, the, the benefits from having that done from those places. It's, it's, it's a lot of money. The state mandates, what's, what's the regulations on the state mandates for these projects? What's our timeframe? We need to see all that stuff before we vote on a $20 million bond issue.
Thank you. So at this point, what we, we will vote on it as it has been presented. Any further comments before we vote?
Are we voting on my motion or?
On the motion that was put on here.
Why don't we just move to have it go to a study session?
Madam Chair, would you please reread the motion? Would you like?
Regulations Concerning Industrial Pretreatment Program Adopted by the Great Lakes Water Authority Resolution.
What was the motion though? Was to move it to a study session? Because we need public
Well, okay, Michigan, I'm sorry, Council Secretary.
I have.
Support.
I have. That's the notice of intent resolution, right, for the capital bonds or 11B. I have that we
Is there a motion in the second on that?
I have Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
So we must vote on that motion as it is right now and
And I have it that we're sending it back to administration to go to a town hall meeting. Is that correct?
Okay, yeah, but we need to vote on the motion first before we can send it back.
The motion.
That's the motion.
Yeah, the motion was to send it back.
So instead of approving the, the motion, we're gonna send it back so that they can inform the residents.
All those in favor of sending it back say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Resolution to Support H R 6422.
Okay, Madam Chair, sorry, I could unmute myself. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Madam Chair, I move that the City Council adopt the resolution to support H R 6422 as outlined in 11C.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bassy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Resolution to Stand Against Police Brutality Call to Action.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I move the City Council adopt the resolution to stand against police brutality. Called action as outlined in 11B.
Support.
Support. Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Um, I do want to share with everyone an update with a, a federal bill, which is the Justice and Policing Act, which has been renamed the George Floyd Act, is moving right now through Congress. But I think that's great at the federal level. We're gonna see that trickle down to state level as well as some of the, you know, issues that they're addressing like eliminating, prohibiting the chokehold, things of that nature. But I do think, and we had a resident that made this comment earlier, that we need to think like in our own community, what we can do, you know, as far as addressing this. And I thought, there was a comment about the citizen board, a review board. I thought that's, you know, something that maybe in the future, very soon we should discuss, because this is a really critical time in our country as well as our community's history, where we're gonna stand on social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, um, Councilman?
Madam Chair. For me?
Councilman Abdullah.
I fully support this resolution and obviously needless to say, I, like a lot of us, are, am totally against any type of police brutality. The only little comment I'd like to make is unfortunately I've seen a lot of things in the media and elsewhere where it's starting to be almost like a, an anti-police thing. And I just want to give hats off and my salutes for all of our first responders that put their lives on the line for all of us and protect us, protect our kids, protect our family. And yes, there are, you know, unfortunately, extremely small percentage of, of cops that maybe don't do their jobs properly, just like there's some bad realtors, bad attorneys, bad politicians, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to give hats off to all of our police officers. Because I do know that them, like a lot of our other first responders, do a great job protecting the community. And I'm sure with our great community, and I'm sure with our great leadership, especially in our city in Dearborn Heights that we have in place, we'll continue to move forward with providing better protection for all of our residents in a respectful way within the law, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coniston, your next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would echo what Councilman Abdullah says, we've discussed, for example, use of body cameras, I know in city of Dearborn, the use of our video cameras is actually a great help to the police, I think our police department is well-trained and our first responders are well-trained, I don't know, maybe the chief can comment about any use of any chokehold or anything, I heard the councilwoman say, mentioned something about social justice, I mean, if it's a resolution to condemn police brutality and to ask for training and equipment, yes, but the police have a very difficult job, we've had police officers shot and so forth, and I don't want this to be seen in any way as an anti-police resolution.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that, please?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
That is not what the resolution says, okay, the resolution is, thank you, Madam Chair, can you hear me? Hi. That's not what the resolution says, I would encourage you to read the resolution, this is, again, it's not anti-police, it's the anti-police brutality, we have officers that acknowledge that, you know, and then we didn't say our community necessarily, but it is a problem across the country and it is impactful and needs to be addressed, and if you read the resolution, it is directing that, you know, nationwide as well as statewide, if, you know, I believe, and I've talked to our police chief and addresses, and he can share that, that we've talked about the policies, and certainly Dearborn Heights Police and our chief, our new chief has done a great job with trying to address that, I give him kudos for that, and he's actually part of an NAACP seminar coming, or not seminar, but a town hall, so I do commend him, and this is not anti-police, okay, it's anti-police brutality, thank you.
Any further discussion regarding this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution Delegating Public Hearing Process for Brownfield Plan to the City of Dearborn Heights Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our BRA Administrator, Tom Roscoe, the city's Brownfield Authority BRA is in the process of putting together a Brownfield redevelopment plan for the property located at 6425 North Telegraph, which has confirmed contamination under previous ownership, that a relatively new owner of this site is planning to demolish the current gas station, clean the site, and build a new modern station, the process our BRA has followed in the past is to formulate a plan, organize and conduct public hearings, and adopt the plan at its BRA Board, and then forward the plan to the city council for final adoption. It is our understanding that having updated the Brownfield Act in recent years, the state of Michigan requires that in order for the city's BRA to organize and conduct the public hearing, the city council must adopt a resolution delegating to the BRA the public hearing process regarding the plan, and attached to the resolution with the appropriate language outlined in 11E, with that being the case, I have to read the resolution if you don't mind, is that okay, Council Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. The following resolution was offered by Councilperson Dave Abdullah and supported by Councilperson?
Support.
I can't tell who it is. Councilman Ray Muscat, whereas the city of Dearborn Heights has created the City of Dearborn Heights Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the authority pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act being Act 381 of the Public Acts of 1996, has amended the act, whereas the authority has prepared a Brownfield redevelopment plan, a plan for the property located at 6425 North Telegraph Road pursuant to and in accordance with Section 13 of the act, and whereas the Dearborn Heights City Council, before the meeting of the council to approve the plan, is required to provide notice to all taxing jurisdictions which are affected by the proposed plan, and to provide the taxing jurisdictions a reasonable opportunity to express their views and recommendations regarding the adoption of the plan in accordance with Section 14 of the act, now therefore it is be, I'm sorry, now therefore it is resolved by the Dearborn Heights City Council that public hearing process delegation pursuant to Section 14, 1 of the act, the city council delegates to the authority the public hearing process regarding the plan, and final approval pursuant to the Section 14-1 of the act, the public hearing process as so delegated and the plan itself is so subject to the final approval of the city council as outlined in item 11E.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to say, I drove by this particular gas station, and a lot of us are probably a little bit more familiar with it, because if I could be so blunt, I hope the owners don't get offended, it is not a very pretty gas station right now at this particular point, and for them to want to remodel this thing and make a much more beautiful property for us, for those that don't know which one this is, this is one right across from the McDonald's on Telegraph near corner of Pass, and I'm glad that this particular authority is going to be putting together this plan to beautify not only the property but beautify the neighborhood, because I could tell you, it was always one of the, well, let's just say it wasn't a very nice looking building, and I'm glad they're going forward with something like this, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey.
Yeah, so I was looking at all the verbiage on here, was there, obviously, there's contamination, has DNR, anybody, I don't see anything on here that they looked at the property, are they, is that contamination with the tanks, underground tanks, or, I mean, is somebody going to look at that for underground contamination, was that addressed?
I believe the state does that when gas stations are closed, I went through that with the old gas station at Michigan and Gully, and they put them on the list and they do check them, and they're the ones that make the determination.
Also, Council Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
There is words in the original letter, and although I do agree with Councilman Bazey in there, it could be a little on a vagrant, it does say the word clean the site, but just like Councilman Bazey stating, you know, that could be a relative term, what is cleaning? Is it just getting rid of all the bad concrete, or is it actual site cleaning, so I do agree, it's probably better to put more clear language, more clearer language in there.
Our attorney wants to say so.
Madam Chair. Gary Miyaki, hold on it. Mister, you have to unmute yourself now.
Okay, thank you, yes, the Brownfield Authority basically follows up on these properties, and they have to end up being shown as having been contaminated in order to qualify for remediation pursuant to the Brownfield Act, so that's what this would allow the Brownfield Authority to do, it ultimately has to come back to you to end up approving the plan, but there, you know, contamination is always checked out, and when the property ends up being sold, there would be appropriate phase environmental plans that would end up being done to check this, and then this is a way to end up making sure that the property can get cleaned up.
Okay, I have a message from Tom Wenzel that he can help clear this up too, let me unmute him, Tom, you need to unmute yourself from your end too. Councilman Wenzel, can you unmute?
Well, I decided not to comment on this at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
I have Councilman Coniston next.
Yeah, for the Brownfield Authority to do anything, it has to first be bound to have some contamination, the city fire marshal and others go out and check the tanks, if they're metal tanks, if they're leaking, it leaked at the bottom, if there's going to be anything other than a gas station there, they'll pull the tanks, or even if they're going to have a gas station, they'll replace them with the fiberglass tanks, so there's a whole set of procedures in place if it's a Brownfield, and if it's a gas station and anyone's touching the property at all by both the city and the state.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to Initiation of Financial Review.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the council approve the resolution to initiate a financial review as outlined in 11F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is Business License for Motor Vehicles LLC located at 22120 Van Born, also for Bucks Pub located 23845 Born, Irwin's Auto Sales located at 23706 Van Born, Ford Lanes located at 23100 Van Born, and La Marina Auto Sales at 8230 North Telegraph.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that city council approve the business licenses for the businesses that you mentioned as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Coniston.
Irwin Auto, there was a real problem there with access to the property in case there was ever a fire, Director McIntyre, does anybody know, have those problems been straightened out? Or Mayor?
Mayor?
Charlotte on Van Born.
Hold on, unmute the mayor. Oh, come on, it's not a mute in here, go ahead.
I was going to let Jack McIntyre speak to that.
Okay. All right, let's find Director McIntyre.
I got him.
I get it.
There he is.
Okay, I have a, I have a two and a half year old with me, so you may hear him in the background, so, so that continues to be an ongoing issue, they're overcrowded in the amount of cars they put in that lot, and we're, you know, we, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we ended up in court, and there was, there were some very specific guidelines about how many cars they could have, that they had to allow for customer parking, so that's something that we have to visit regularly, but as far as today goes, I would, they are not in compliance with that, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Comments from council members, before we say anything, I'd like to take and thank John Riley for his service, this is his last meeting and he has 26 and a half years as our treasurer of the city of Dearborn Heights. So, thank you for your service, John, you've done a great job, we wish you well in the future. Okay, I next, I have Councilman Wenzel, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, first of all, I'd like to congratulate on her appointment to the clerk's position, and I'd also like to thank all the candidates that applied for the job, and encourage those very interested in the job to spend the next nine months honing their skills at the clerk's position, so they can be on the ballot for next November, I truly hope that they do, if they're really sincere about this, and I'd also like to thank John for his service with Dearborn Heights, great guy, good friend, and thanks for all your help, John, and everything you've done for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, thanks, next we have Councilman Muscat and then Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, go ahead, please.
Just piggyback on Councilman Wenzel's comments about Mr. Riley, thank you for your service, I consider you a friend now as much as I did a treasurer, and I do hope these candidates that came forth before us yesterday decide to get into action, it was such a hard, hard decision to pick someone out of that group of people, I just can't, it was very difficult, so I'll just leave it at that, but I want to discuss phone calls I get from residents about garbage pickup in the Cronin Street area, they've been complaining about their trash not being picked up till nine o'clock at night, and now they're missed again this week, on Monday was supposed to be their trash pickup, and here it is Tuesday, and their trash isn't picked up still yet, we have to do something about GFL, I think in the years that we've had GFL, I feel that more complaints about that than anything else, so we need to start looking and start putting a hammer down on GFL to pick up the trash at a reasonable time, in the allotted time, and there's also a complaint on Fairwood Street near Warren about the, I believe it's Waste Management picking up trash before 7:00 AM, again, they were out there, the other day, I got the video from a gentleman who sent it to me, he's been complaining to the mayor's office and everybody else about this trash pickup, we need to stop them from picking up before 7:00 in the morning, okay? And the other thing I want to talk about is city hall is now opening up, I think this week we're going to be opening up next week for without appointments, I believe that was the case, but has city hall been professionally clean? I mean, I've been in city hall where I've seen window sills with dead flies on it and dust, and matter of fact, one time I was in the HR department and I spoke with our HR director about how nasty the shredder looked, that it wasn't clean, I mean, it was horrible, and we need to have that professionally cleaned before we allow people to go in there and not catch this COVID-19 disease, so that's what I have to say, if anybody's got any comments on it, I'd like to hear, please.
Okay, thank you, next we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you, Councilor, I think the mayor had a response, so, the Councilman Muscat, if you wanted to go first, Madam Chair, he was waving his arm. Oh, you want me to go ahead or?
No, no, we'll unmute the mayor, that's fine.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
He's muted still.
I think he needs to unmute from the other, his end.
He can call me tomorrow if he wants.
Okay.
Okay. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, we were open last week by appointment, this week, we opened on Monday and the transition went very well, we have limited, though, by the governor's regulation, we can't have more than 10 people in city hall at one time, and we have, John Solomy has spent the time in regards to making sure that the center is clean, and we're using a machine that gets this mist out that kills the virus, I should mention that we are closed from 12 to 1, and we fumigate, we have cleaning people come in and clean back city hall, and then we reopen again at 2, so the hours have been from 9 to 12 and 2 to 4, 2 to 5, so it has gone well, people have been understanding, when you come in, you have to wear a mask and you get your temperature taken, and you are asked a series of questions to make sure you're not carrying the virus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next I have Council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'm thinking, Madam Chair, I too would like to thank our treasurer, John Riley, for his years of service and commitment to community, and I definitely wish him the very best in his retirement, I also want to congratulate Lynn Sinia for her appointment to city clerk, and I'd like to thank the council members for the support of the two resolutions tonight, 11C and 11D, thank you for your support, council members, I would like to ask our. I would like to ask our attorney, Mr. Miyaki, is there going to be any movement or an ordinance? I had asked this question a few meetings back regarding ordinance for the open outdoor seating, you know, for restaurants during the COVID, you know, what we're going through. A lot of other communities are changing their ordinances and their zoning so they can have outdoor seating for restaurants. So it supports the business community, as well encourages people to spend money in our community, which is always good. But it's also good to get out. We all need to get out if we can safely. So hoping that you might have something, if there's something in the works. I know I had talked to Wayne County Economic Development, and they had mentioned that there was some information available on that if needed. So that was my first question. And then I did want to say, and the second thing is I have for our police chief regarding fireworks. There's a Senate Bill 964 that's moving right now to help allow municipalities to regulate fireworks. This is that time of year, we get a lot of calls, a lot of complaints. We're a very densely populated community, so it impacts people, families, pets, et cetera, veterans. And I thought it would be good, because I get calls all the time, if you would share publicly what that current ordinance is and enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I think Councilman Abdullah had his hand raised up first.
Can I get questions answered, please?
According to the hands that were raised in order, I have Councilman Wenzel.
But Madam Chair, they didn't answer my questions, Madam Chair. Can we allow them to answer?
He's unmuted.
Okay, do you want me to answer, Chair?
Yes.
We are presently not working on that type of ordinance. If that would be something that the council would like to end up having done, I could speak to Mr. Roberts with respect to that. I'm sure that he would be more than happy to address that issue. The mayor is.
Waving his hand.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to mention to Mr. Miyaki, but I talked to Mr. Roberts about it. I think it was at the end of last week, and it is being developed an ordinance to allow outdoor seating. As regarding fireworks, I'll let somebody else answer that.
I can handle that. Couple things. First, if the state passes something that's going to allow us to restrict fireworks at a greater length anywhere in the state, I would be all for it. Our fireworks, as a resident, I completely understand every resident's concern over what's going on with the fireworks. What I want to do is back up and give you some statistics first. In the last 10 days, we've had 85 calls for service, roughly eight to 10 a day, more on the weekends than during the week. I know for a fact, in my area alone, we would have more than that if everybody called. So a couple of things have happened for us to try to mitigate this. First, the fire department, through the Fire Marshal and through Crime Prevention at the Police Department, put together a joint message on Facebook to try to reach a crowd that's probably using Facebook more. We're not quite there at Twitter, to let them know exactly the do's and don'ts and the laws under the current city ordinance. That being said, if you want to know the exact ordinance, you go to City of Dearborn Heights MUNI code, M-U-N-I-C-O-D-E. It gives you the exact ordinance. It is somewhat complicated, because it has different fireworks that could or could not be authorized. But in short, no fireworks, other than sprinklers and a couple others, are allowed outside of certain days. Coming up, these days are June 29th through July 4th. Those are the only days that fireworks are allowed. That being said, fireworks have to be shot off of your own private property and land on your own private property. You are not allowed to use public property to shoot them off. And if the projectiles land on somebody else's property, you're also in violation of the ordinance. They are dangerous. We are out there trying to enforce it. It's like chasing ghosts. They go off, we go to those areas, they're gone. What it's going to take, it's a community problem. It's going to take community participation. We need people to be witnesses. If our officers don't witness it, we need a witness to witness it and participate. To, if they have a video of it, to, we can't just provide that video. We have to have them participate in the prosecution, if that's where it goes. We need people to participate. If it's bothering them to call the police, but also point out who the person was, and if they have video evidence, to provide that. That allows us to take some type of action. It has to be a community solution for this community problem. So those are our numbers. That's what we're doing. We've issued approximately 12 to 15 violations where we've caught them. We've issued about six warnings in that timeframe, and the rest was chasing those ghosts that go up in the air. We don't know where they're coming from. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you, Chief.
Oh, and it's 11:45 they have to stop. Between June 29th and July 4th, it's 11:45, I believe. If I'm wrong, we'll double check MUNI code and we'll make that correction.
Okay, next we have Councilman Wenzel. Councilman Wenzel, are you there? He appears to be gone. Next we have Councilman Abdullah.
The mayor.
I got him written down already.
Okay, cool.
Okay, just a couple of things quickly. I had a note here in regards to the resident on Fairwood. I did speak with the Director of Ordinance, Jack McIntyre, about this. And I know Jack had mentioned that he was going to address this with that particular company, but it seems to be an ongoing problem showing up again. I don't know the specifics at this particular point, because we received an email earlier tonight from the resident. So I hope that can be looked into, and I'm not sure if you or CC did on this or not, to McIntyre. But I'll make sure I forward it to you either way, so please follow up on this. And I hope the company can respect people's, you know, right to peace, just, you know, to be able to sleep and enjoy their homes. So come in and pick up Commercial Garbage Day early in the morning. It's just not acceptable. And I hope it can be addressed. Because I don't mind. I'll call the company, and I won't be nice, that's for sure. Second thing, regards to the clerk position. First of all, I'd thank all the candidates that applied. They all did a pretty good job. For me, I'll be very transparent. It was very difficult, because it came down to two people. Lynn Sinia is a great person, and I'm sure she'll do a great job. And Mr. Waz, quite honestly, was pretty impressive for me, interviewed very, very well. The swing point for me at the end was honestly experienced, considering this is a big election year. And I'd like to congratulate Lynn on getting that. And lastly, I'd like to thank our treasurer, Riley, for all his years of service. And he's done a great job on a regular basis, been very transparent. I'd also like to thank our clerk for everything he's done at the city, and he's done a great job overall over the years. Been very easy to work with, and I'd like to wish him nothing but the best of health, because I know it's something he's been worried about. And good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the, we have the mayor. Can somebody unmute the mayor?
I got him.
Okay, hopefully he can hear me. I wanted to mention that I think it's important, resolutions aren't, at this point, given the situation. I think the issue with racism and police and citizens is something that needs to be addressed. And we need to take actual, physical actions in order to solve the particular problem. And I wanted to mention, everybody, that on June 25th, I've been working with our Chief of Police, and also with the NAACP, which I'm a member of, and also the Communities of Western Lane. And we're going to have a series of hearings, first one being June 25th in Livonia. There's one in Romulus. I don't have the particular dates, but we're going to publicize that. And those are going to be to create dialogue between the public, the police departments, and the leadership in the communities in the Western Lane area. And we want feedback. We want to have good discussion. And we hope out of that will lead a solution to the particular problem. So I want to invite everybody to that particular meeting, and as the other ones come into play, we will invite you to those also.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Coniston, you had your hand up, but you've already spoke, correct?
No, I haven't spoke.
Okay, I'll give you down here a couple of things. Go ahead, Lynn. I just want to make sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I too would like to thank our treasurer, John Riley, Certified Public Accountant, for the great job he's done. I remember when John was sworn in, and he thanked Joe Kozinski Jr. for meeting with him and training him. He's been very transparent, very first class. I hope to do as good of a job as he did on the sanitation authority. I'd also like to thank our city clerk and wish him well. I'd like to congratulate the council on the good job that the council did for the interviews and for the appointment of the clerk. The process worked, and it worked well. I think all the applicants that applied were outstanding, and they all should be congratulated for showing an interest. We hope they stay involved in the community and their interest in public service. The fireworks, if people can understand that our neighborhoods, anybody who has pets, for example, the shooting off of these fireworks, the loud fireworks late at night. The state law was changed when I was in the legislature that allowed for the sale again of fireworks. The idea was that it was going to capture some revenue that was out there. But especially in our densely populated neighborhoods in Dearborn Heights, shooting off the fireworks late at night is a real problem. And they ask the residents to use some caution and not light off the fireworks and disturb the peace of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Council Secretary, I'm sorry, let's go with Council, I'm sorry, our clerk, Walt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, I see your name there. I hope you're listening. I want to say thank you to everything you have done to assist me in my job, in my office, in doing things. The cooperation has been tremendous. I just want people to know, you don't realize the job that John has done over the years. His integrity is unsurpassed, his dedication, the hours he puts in, the many hats he wears as far as the pensions, the treasurer, the bonding, the many different things, handling the cash, handling the employees. He did a phenomenal job. And John, I'm just so happy that over these 27 years that you have been our treasurer, and you have left our city in a great, great position as far as the job you did. And I can't thank you enough. I can only wish you the very best in the rest of your endeavors. And once again, it's a personal thank you. It has been great to work with you. I've enjoyed it, and God bless you, John.
Thank you. Next we have our Council Secretary Lynn.
Here we go. Thank you. I want to thank all of you for having the confidence in me to fill in some pretty big shoes. The clerk is responsible for a lot of things. I've learned a lot since I've been there. And through the last two and a half years, they've become my family. I've had, you know, one of the worst year and a half in my whole, years and year and a half in my life, and they have been there for me. I would not have even thought about putting in for this position if I didn't have such supportive coworkers. And Deputy Clerk Anne Ingeorge Anne, thank you very much. I look forward to continuing to work with you guys. We're pretty awesome, aren't we? But anyway, thank you for the confidence. And on that note, I know a couple of you said, a couple of our council members said about getting involved. You know, having our residents getting involved, or those that are interested in this position. And I know our clerk has mentioned this many a times, but we're always looking for poll workers, and that's a start. It's not a full-time job. It's, you know, we're still looking for them. The polls will be open. The absentee ballots are, I don't know, triplicates or something. It's quite a bit more, because all residents in Michigan got absentee voter applications. So call our office, and we can get you an application. And of course, like I said, Walt has a wealth of knowledge, and I look forward to learning more from him. Prior to going into the clerk's office, though, I did have a period of 11 and a half years that I worked with our treasurer, Riley. And today, at our General Government Pension Meeting, we had to accept his retirement application. And I can tell you that his deputy treasurer, Colleen Garcia, accepted it under protest, as well as I. But we wish John the best of luck. He is an awesome human being, and we have been so lucky to have him in our city. Best election.
Okay, any other council or Councilman Bazey? Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to also thank all the candidates that applied for the city clerk's position. I also want to commend Mr. Riley and congratulate him on his retirement. And also, I want to thank him especially for all the help, all the information that, the stuff that I asked for always provided on time. I appreciate it. Also, I want to bring up like three items. I did the email that came up from Fairwood in Dearborn Heights. I forwarded it to the director for ordinance. You should have that. I know one of the council members said they were going to email it, so I did forward that email. The second item I have is the street sweepers. I got a couple emails from residents. They want to find out if the street sweepers, are they going through the streets right after the, I guess, the garbage day? Or is that on hold? I haven't seen them, and some residents haven't either.
Thank you.
No, I mean, that's a question.
That's what I was going to ask. Who are you directing that toward?
Okay, well, Director Sellme, I mean, that's.
And unmute him.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Hold on a minute. I think I found him. Okay, Director Sellme?
Yep, I'm here. Yep, send me the address, and I will tell you the dates. We have been there sweeping. We have been tracking that. For this very reason of people saying that we don't sweep their streets.
Okay, I'll forward you that email, Mr. Sellme.
Yep, and now I'll get back to you when we've solved it.
Thank you. I also got two calls the last few days about the 5G towers. From my understanding, the ordinance was said that they were not going to put them in residence areas. Is that true? Or, because I know at least one resident, I don't know if they're online, if the one that called me, but I know somebody mentioned it earlier. But for the cell towers, are they putting them in residential areas? Because one of the residents, his wife has cancer, and he's very concerned, because they put it across the street from his house.
Okay, who would you like to direct that question to, Councilman?
Well, whoever can answer that question, because residents need to know why these cell towers go into their neighborhoods. And from my understanding, I know we questioned that when the ordinance went through, that they said they were not going to actually put them in residence, or they were going to chuck with the residents.
Is there anybody? Okay, hold on a minute. Mayor wants to answer. Let me unmute him.
Thank you. One of the reasons they ended up in residential areas, and in fact, one block over from me, is a major 5G connection, is because of the fact the council did not act on that ordinance. And so consequently, we were exposed for almost 60 to 75 days, and they put them up wherever they wanted them, because we had no ordinance.
Madam Chair, one was put up yesterday. The ordinance was passed a while back, so one tower was just put up yesterday.
Well, you have to give me the address. I believe, I'm assuming it's correct. I don't know.
Okay, I think, I don't know, if the resident is not addressing that, I'll send the address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Dr. McIntyre with his hand raised. Hold on a minute. Let me unmute him. Director, you got to unmute yourself.
Yeah, so the mayor is correct. Going forward, what the ordinance did that you guys passed, it gives us the ability to have a conversation with the contractors when they come in. During that period of time when the ordinance wasn't in place, we had no control at all. So now what happens is all the applications come in. So the one that went up yesterday, Councilman Bazey, could have been one that was, that permit was submitted. And when I say submitted, they just told us where they're putting them and we couldn't stop them. But with the, with the ordinance that you passed, thankfully now, Building Director Damski can now meet with the contractor and say, you know, that's the spot you really want it. Can we look at another location where it's not like in the direct line or directly on someone's property? But the 5G ordinance always included that these towers were going to be in residential areas. But by you guys passing that ordinance, it gives us some more flexibility working with the contractors, particularly Verizon.
Okay, thank you, Director. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to community announcements. And then we will go to public announcements. I have two people I know that want to speak at least in public announcements, so I will be addressing you. On community announcements. Anybody see anything? At this time, I'm going to open it up. We have a resident by the name of Amy Baydun. You need to state your name and you have a limit of three minutes to speak. Is, can somebody locate Amy? She has been messaging me.
I got him.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I tried, let's see. Think he's okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please, speak your name.
I was the resident that Mr. Bill Bazey was speaking about the issue of the 5G cell towers. And we first initially thought they were changing the power line law over there. And then without any warning or anything, no one was told us anything. They, we just woke up and this tower was put up and the workers told us it's going to be a 5G tower. And this is literally right in front of our house. You could see it right there. It's literally right there, that long log. Let me bring it up to you. This is right outside my bedroom window. And it's not, this is not right at all. It's going to be radiating all over the neighborhood, right over our heads, you know?
Close to my kitchen and summer room.
Right in front of our home. I'm sure nobody in the council would want this in front of their home with their families. You know, they already say it's bad enough to sleep. You know, they already say it's bad enough to sleep with your phone next to you in your bed. Imagine the thing that's signaling off your phone is now right above your head, above your home. It's not right at all. It's not acceptable. I'm sure nobody in this Zoom meeting would want this in front of their house and it's not right at all. Because the council should be looking out for the people, for their health, you know, the stuff in their community. People in this community are old people in this residence area. They're all old people. Some people are sick. Some people are cancer survivors. Some people are still fighting with cancer. They don't need this radiation nonstop going above their head. Especially 4G to 5G. 5G is going to radiate a lot more than 4G already does.
Big radiation.
Big update. I don't know if people were educated on the topic when they voted yes to this, whoever did, but it's really a big deal. And I think it needs
Whoever voted for this, yes, let him put him in his home and his backyard, okay? I love it.
This is our neighbor across the street who'd like to speak on this.
We're down to last one minute, so make it quick.
My name's Robert Bunt, I live at 386 Norbourn, right across the street, 20 yards from my house. I'm going to sell my house. Who's going to buy my house now? Tower right here. What family is going to buy my house? I don't understand. Why would they put this here? There's no, you know, it's I can't drive by and see it.
There's many other areas this could have been pulled.
Okay, thank you very much.
They put one in my business, Parkside and Warren Avenue. It's okay in my business. They put one around my business, Parkside, Warren Avenue, and one from my house now. That's a big problem in my house. I have to take, they have to come take it out tomorrow. I don't care. Let this man work on it right now. Okay?
Hey, Councilman, most
Thank you. I don't accept that shit like this in here.
I, I'd like to address that. Gentlemen.
Time, so you can only address it and that's it.
I just want to tell them that we didn't vote to put this stuff in. That came from Lansing and Washington. We're trying to stop it. Right. So, so, you know, I, I think their picture just went away and they're not listening to what I'm saying, but we didn't vote to put this in. Lansing and Washington have pushed this down our throat and taken away our power. That's why our ordinance is there to try to stop some of it if we can. But it's not the city's fault. It's Lansing and Washington.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to back up because Director Hashem has a public announcement. I guess we didn't catch it and I apologize for that. So let's unmute him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Just a very quick thing. I did attend a Zoom meeting a few days ago with Wayne County. This is for small businesses in Dearborn Heights and obviously other communities as well. Wayne County did receive $50 million grant from the federal government and this money will be available to all small businesses, including Dearborn Heights. I will share the link on the website, on the CDBG or CEDD website. If you go to Community Development, Community and Economic Development Department, there will be a link that will take you to give you the information that you need. The application itself is not out there yet. It will be out there, it'll be out next week. I will share that as well. I will put it on my website. I will also put it on Facebook. So I just want everybody to know that there is a grant available for small businesses. Small businesses anywhere from one to 50 employees. If they have that, they will be awarded a $10,000 grant. They don't have to pay it back. It will help them get started after the COVID-19. So please look up for that, look out for that link that I'm going to put on the CDBG website. And I want to wish Lynn a good, you know, I want to wish her, I want to congratulate her, congratulate her and say she will do a great job. Thank you very much and you all have a good night.
Thank you. We have Matthew Schenk. Can we unmute him? You're going to have to do it for your own. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you, Council. Just wanted to give a quick update because the mayor made a comment about the Court of Appeals case earlier and just wanted to clarify that the issue of the Court of Appeals ruling did not even discuss the Open Meetings Act as was referenced earlier. What the Court of Appeals indicated is that the council had a clear legal right to request and hire attorneys to assist with the investigation. And the mayor had a clear legal duty to approve that engagement. We look forward to assisting with the investigation in any way we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next I have someone has the name Gator. Okay, let me unmute you. You're going to have to unmute from your, go ahead.
I think I did. Hi, everyone. Thank you for creating the platform for me to be here today. My name is Latanya Gator. As Chairwoman, is it Malinowski stated? I am a Dearborn Heights resident for the past eight years. My professional background is in mental health and in being a social advocate and a basic human rights advocate. And I actually proposed this question or this claim to the mayor last week, also City Councilwoman Lisa, and also I made a message to the Dearborn Heights Police Department out of respect for protocol and governmental structures. Because my point is I want to engage with the community as a woman of color and foster more diversity, equity and inclusion within the community. And I wanted to know were there any current initiatives, current efforts, anything implemented already that I can align myself with? And if there's not anything, what can we do to create that? And I would like to propose that question to anyone who could answer.
I would direct Councilwoman Hicks Clayton on that.
Yes. Oh, hi, Madam Chair, thank you. You know, I had sent a request to the clerk's office. I just received the email back with the information that the city of Dearborn Heights does have a commission on diversity. However, it's inactive right now. So I would recommend, you know, we work for the mayor's office and get that commission reactivated because that is a great platform to continue what you're interested in and what is needed. So that is my recommendation. And I, I think I have your information, so I can contact you tomorrow. Call you if you like, but definitely I want to see that commission activated again because that is a very important subject and absolutely we need people to serve on that commission who can bring forward ideas and suggestions and most importantly, their perspective because we need to be listening. We need to be listening and responding and creating a culture for everybody. This is everyone's community and we need to be respectful of different cultures there.
Thank you. Okay, I have been, let's unmute him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished.
Oh, because the mayor wants to comment too before you're done.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Yeah, I won't use up your time, but I'd be more than happy to have your ideas and your thoughts. And I also invite you that, Levonia, we're going to have the first of the meetings on June 25th. But we're also planning on having one in Dearborn Heights. But we want to get a good dialogue going. And we look forward to your input and I look forward to working with you personally.
Thank you, Mayor Palletco. I am registered to attend that event and I proposed some ideas in the platform that was set to do that. And so I appreciate that as well as Councilwoman Lisa Hicks. Thank you for your response both last week and today. And I, and I do have one more thing if I'm not out of time and I'm sorry. I also have joined alliances with Natalie. Her name is Natalie Montana and Ms. Rachel LaPointe. Natalie is organizing or has organized a peaceful rally within our city that will take place on this upcoming Sunday at 1 o'clock to march for justice and support of black lives, beginning at Polk and marching up Annapolis to, sorry, I forget the name of the Thorn Elementary School. And again, out of respect for current rules and protocols, we reached out to the police department. They have agreed to escort us so we can make sure that everyone is safe as much as we can. And again, we have spoken with the councilwoman and invited the mayor and today I am soliciting support and inviting you all to march with us in support of black lives this Sunday. And continuing our efforts to make sure that everyone in the community feels supported and heard regardless of a limitation or color or just again, the inability to speak about what their concerns are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tina Brown. Can somebody locate her, please, and unmute her?
All right, there we go.
Tina, can you
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, state your name and you have three minutes.
Okay, I am calling, I'm here in regards to an ongoing blight issue with my neighbor. I wanted to make sure that the city council was aware. This issue, I moved in here five years ago. I purchased my home. I recently found out that this issue's been going on for 20 years. I am right across the street from the elementary school, four blocks from where you are now on Fenton Street. My issue is, is that you can smell the house from four doors down. Okay? I have been more than patient. I have been complaining. I have been in communication. The follow-up communication has been horrible. I called last year. They were already in court proceedings. They had to have it cleaned up by Father's Day. They packed everything up into totes and put it in the backyard. There is a vehicle that was supposed to be removed by November. It's still sitting there full to the gills of trash. They have not taken not one piece of trash out to the curb in three months. I have rats. I have personally captured three raccoons and disposed of them myself. That, I can't let my grandchildren go outside and play. Again, this is right across the street from the elementary school. When they do finally clean it up, these rats are going to want to go somewhere. I am totally frustrated. I am tired and my patience is gone. So I wanted to make it sure that everybody on the city council is aware. I contacted the mayor's office on Monday. I also contacted Denise on Monday and sent her pictures of the situation that I've been dealing with. The house has not had water since October or August of last year and these people are still living there. So I just wanted to make sure that was on record. I do realize that the court system is closed until July 9th and there's really nothing that you can do about it until then. But I will be back at the next council meeting to give you an update on what my situation is. If you would like to come and take a look at the backyard or come to my backyard or even just walk past, I would invite you to do so. The address is 7507 Fenton Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go further, I mean, please tell people when you raise your hand and I take it down, I am putting your name on a list. It's not necessary to continually keep raising it. You are in a waiting list here. Next I have Tom and he's with Tifa. Go ahead, please. Can we unmute him?
Got him.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I'm kind of still learning how Zoom works.
A lot of people don't realize when the hand disappears, I had to take it down. I put you on a list. I have people phone 10 times, so that's why I thought I'd make that announcement.
Right, right. Okay, so yeah, I was, a couple of things I wanted to chime in with earlier. And again, I couldn't figure out how to chime in earlier, but now I got it. So for the Brownfield project, I just want to let you know, we, there was initial testing done. And because of that, the developer is going to remove all the tanks, demolish all the buildings and remove the soil and replace it with clean soil. So I know it'll be a resolved issue then. So they're, based on the initial testing, he's going to go ahead and do all that. The investment is estimated to be somewhere around a million and a half on the project. So, so thank you for approving that resolution that allows us to proceed and hopefully get it done in expeditious time. And another quick comment, just to thank you also for extending the moratorium on the car lots. 45 days is a good start. Just a reminder, I guess we'll need to have that study session on the with Wade Trim and Taylor because we can't really do anything until that actual, that issue's resolved. But I just want to let you know at the Tifa board meeting last week, the Tifa board did approve to cover half the cost of that, of the City of Dearborn Heights portion, should we get into the contract for those services, which is $8,700. The Tifa will contribute towards that should the council decide to proceed. So again, thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you. Next on the list I have Rita Foley. Can we please unmute her?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, Rita, state your name and you have two minutes. I have three minutes.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Rita Foley. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Patrick and Vivian Foley of Glengarry Street. First, we would like to thank the council members for your commitment to serving the best interests of the residents of Dearborn Heights. Second, they would like to thank current Treasurer Riley and current Clerk Pruszkiewicz for serving the city through their professional dedication to their respective offices and wish them good health in their retirement. Third, my parents would like to express their gratitude to the Dearborn Heights Fire Department and would ask Chief Brogan to convey our thanks to firefighters Sean Phalen, Albert Tanis, Hunter Moore and Jeff Stahelik for their prompt and kind lift assistance. My parents pray daily for the safety of their firefighters. Finally, they would like to commend the council for their action this evening in promoting from within and selecting the next city clerk. While my parents do not personally know either of the candidates who were nominated this evening, it is reassuring to see council recognize the value of institutional experience. Thank you for your careful and thoughtful decision-making in a matter so extraordinarily important as ensuring the integrity of our elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, it says Gwen's Mac. We need to unmute that one.
Sorry, there's just a lot to sift through.
I got it.
Got it? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, state your name and you have three minutes, please. Go ahead, state your name and you have three minutes, please.
Is that for me?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's.
Glenn's MacBook, so I don't.
Yeah, you know what? I'm sorry. I'm using my daughter's, uh, MacBook. I'm a technology caveman, so, uh, I'm using hers. But, uh, I just wanna make a couple of quick points, uh, on, uh, agenda items 7A and B. Um, I know it's a little tumultuous, but, um, I held that contract for the better part of a decade and I find it offensive that somebody would insinuate that I somehow would overcharge the city or I had complaints. Um, you can do a Google review of my company. You can go on Home Advisor and you can see I'm highly rated. So, you know, I kind of find that offensive. My second point was, um, about the comptroller's delay with the bid process. The bid was open on the 27th of May. We didn't get a tabulation until June 15th and I have the emails to back that up. So there was over a two-week period between when the bids should have been publicly open, 24 hours, the bid tabulations should have been available to the public. But that didn't happen. I didn't receive the bid from the deputy comptroller for over two weeks after the bids were open. And then my third thing is the insurance issue. Excuse me. Uh, Councilman Bazey brought up something about insurance. Um, having liability insurance and workman comp are two totally separate things. Anybody can get a liability insurance policy. Workman's compensation is the most important aspect and you would think a director of a, um, building department or an ordinance department would know that. So just because somebody has a liability insurance policy doesn't mean that they're carrying a comp policy. There is a directory through the state of Michigan. Anybody can go online and do a cursory search and they can see who is covered by workman's compensation, who is not. I know me and another contractor that bid for the contract were on there. When you look up the other contractors' uh, legal LLC name, nothing comes up. So liability and workman's comp are two totally separate things. Those are the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, um, we have, I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's not. We have James Balding. I found the list. We've got a long list from tonight. I apologize. So James Balding is next. Can we please locate him and unmute him?
I should, I think I'm set.
Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, um, wanted to, um, actually, um, say thank you to, um, the mayor for bringing up the information about those, um, meetings coming up for the, the 25th in the future starting in Livonia. It's a, sounds like it's a good platform to get communication started about, um, issues with, um, or not, I don't wanna say issues, but with, uh, better communication between the people and, and police departments. So, um, I, I will hopefully be attending that. And I'd like to give a shout out to, um, Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton for listening to my comments earlier about, um, a, uh, a council made up of, um, made up of civilians for over overseeing of police actions and, and I think that that's a critical role. Um, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to speak poorly of, um, the Dearborn Heights Police. I have only been here for about a year, so I, I'm not gonna comment on something I don't know about. Um, my only thought is just that that's something that's missing in abroad, um, in the United States is, uh, a way of overseeing our police departments and it's generally recent, primary cause of why we have a lot of the issues that we have amongst several others. So that's why I wanted to bring it up as a concern. I'm glad somebody was listening. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next please now, um, Chief Myers. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, a couple of things. I just wanted to help some people out. There's been a ton of emails about the NAACP C Conference of Western Me, uh, meeting that's coming up. It is actually tomorrow. Um, it is by invite only because of the rules. So it's at 6:00. The 100 tickets have already been taken to be in person, but I believe it's being livestreamed on Westland's, um, uh, webpage. So you can still participate and watch that way, but I booked, uh, the tickets to actually attend are over. Um, there's been tons of, this was put together very quickly. So there was, there was a thought it was gonna be on the 25th, but it's actually the 24th. Um, there will be additional ones, um, at those. Dearborn Heights will be partaking in. Um, I will be in the audience tomorrow, but I'll actually be a member of the forum in a future one. So I, I want everybody on the same page. Uh, Conference of Western Wayne website will give you the link to, um, how to register for that event when the next one comes up. So that's a great opportunity right there. I do not have their website. It's C W W dot org, but I think there's some hyphens in there, like C hyphen W hyphen W dot org, I believe is it. Um, so that was the first thing. I also want to thank Ms. Gator for, uh, doing a great job of organizing this walk. Um, it's made our job much easier because she did it in such a professional manner by contacting us. We're happy to help. Um, it is not a parade. It's not in the street. This is a walk along the sidewalks. So it, it's not something that should interfere, but we wanna make sure that they have a safe, um, transportation, um, throughout that area, uh, that they're traversing. And then finally, Mr. Holland made a complaint earlier about an incident. I think his name is Holland, about a pastor in our city. If they could contact us, we have ways to review all of those incidents. I have in-car cameras, activity logs, GPS. I need to find out what happened. If it's not brought to us, we can't find out what happened. So if he's still on this meeting somewhere, um, please contact the police department and let us look into it because if there's things we can do better, we want to. If there's an explanation of what went on, we wanna provide that and work together so people understand what the police are doing on a daily basis.
Thank you very much. Next we have Crusher Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for the kind words this evening. It's been a pleasure working with all the employees here at City Hall, all the current and prior elected officials for Dearborn Heights and other communities that I've interacted with over the years. And I wish the city luck. It's a city of a future. And so everybody, please, uh, work together and try to get, uh, the best things done for the city that you can. And, uh, with that, I really appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have Edward Jackson? Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, all. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you now. Finally.
Yeah, sorry about that. My computer is having a problem. Again, I'd like to say thank you, John, and, and wishing the best luck and the wall. Um, there's a lot of things going on in the city. Hopefully we can move forward. One question I had, as I, as I recall the last council meeting, there was discussions about rebuilding a new city hall. And I'm curious how that's gonna happen, where it's gonna happen, how it's gonna be financed. Is that gonna be a bond issue or whatever? There's a lot of things going on. There's a serious money shortage, for one thing. I just wanted to think of a plan to proceed with that.
Who are you addressing? Who are you, um, asking that to?
Anybody that can answer would be great.
Would anybody like to?
I'm sure.
Glenn Muscat? Hold on. Go ahead. Oh, hold on. Muscat, go ahead.
Mr. Jackson, I, I, I saw a building that was for sale and actually it was another citizen's, um, idea, not mine, so I'm not gonna take the credit for it. Um, and it was brought to my attention and it just brought me into the idea of what Westland did. Uh, and I always have been scouring the city. I wish we had a building that, uh, we could build a new city hall takeover. So that was, it, it's a pipe dream of ours. Uh, city hall is in bad, bad shape. It's old. Uh, a, and everybody knows it. It's, it's not, nothing new. A, and I'm hoping that one day we can see it come to fruition, that, uh, uh, we can do something about city hall. So, uh, that was just a, a pipe dream of mine and I brought it to the mayor's attention, that a building was up for sale and for maybe the possibility that we look into it. I don't know if it'll ever happen, but at least it's in the, in the brains of, and, and working through a process.
All right. I, I appreciate that answer. I was just curious because I know the, uh, the city hall we have now, it used to be the police station. So that building's been around a very long time.
Now, the police station's knocked down. It wasn't a police station. City Hall's been a city hall. The police station was behind it and got knocked down.
Okay, that's true. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Tom's hand is up.
Who?
Um, Tom, Councilman Tom Wunsel.
Okay, one, so are you commenting as a resident? Because we're already gone past the council table comments.
I'm commenting as a resident, commenting as a resident.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I, uh, recently I had the honor of, uh, welcoming a new neighbor into our neighborhood that moved in behind me, a young couple, um, and they were very excited to move into Dearborn Heights. And, uh, after talking with them, I found out he's, uh, recently out of the Marine Corps into the private life and he's currently a Detroit City Police Cadet. And we, uh, the other day I was talking with him and he said, uh, "It's a bad time to be a cop." And af, after I left our conversation with him, I came into the house and I was thinking, and this is something I think we should go by. It's, it's not a bad time to be a cop. It's a good time to be a good cop. And I think that's what we should go after with, uh, moving forward with our police department in the city of Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Christina Lazlo. I have already unmuted her. Go ahead, please.
Wait. Hi, I'm City Council. I, um, just wanna say really quick. City Council approved a bid to go out for appraisals a couple of weeks ago. I wanna, from City Council, the bid's back from the attorney again and, um, is going to be going out tomorrow. It, on, last time when we went out for bid four years ago, we did not get enough contractors to bid on the appraisal service. So I'm asking that many of you have mentioned you know appraisers and I'm asking if I forward you the packet tomorrow, if you can forward that onto those appraisal companies so we can get as many appraisal companies as possible, get a qualified candidate to move forward with the grant.
I, I could help you with that.
Well, thank you, Councilman.
Well, I've got a suggestion too. Um, Larry Donski in the building department deals with the prices on a daily basis in the city and you may wanna go to him and see if he's got any that he could send to law so.
Well, I have, in the, the last time around, I always contact the assessor's office who deals with them and I have dealt, um, dealt with the building department that has to. It's just getting the people that are willing to go through Davis Bacon. It's not a lot of money, so a lot of companies aren't willing to go through all the red tape for a little bit of money to get. So if you know people, um, I'm asking you forward them on and I'm gonna do it for every step of the process because that was, that was the biggest challenge last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I hear somebody move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear support?
Or.
Glenn Muscat, support. If they were say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned. Have a good night.
Have a good day, folks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.